To order this meeting of the James City Service Authority Board of Directors. Good afternoon, Mr. Powell, would you please call the roll?
Good afternoon, Mr. Hippel.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Here.
Ms. Sadler.
Here. Any public comment from anyone?
No ma'am.
Consent calendar, minutes of adoption.
Motion for approval?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose? Carries. Public hearings? None.
No public hearings, no board consent.
Or considerations, anyone?
Nope.
Okay. Board requests and directives?
Nope.
General managers update?
Nope.
(laughing).
Mr. Hippel's correct, I have no, never, nothing to report this afternoon.
And with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn until 4:00 PM on May 21, 2019, for the regular meeting.
So moved.
Mr. Hippel.
Aye.
Ms. Larson.
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan.
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour.
Aye.
Ms. Sadler.
Aye, we're adjourned.
Meeting of the James City County Board of Supervisors for a work session. Mr. Stevens, call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hippel?
Here.
Ms. Larson?
Here.
Ms. Sadler?
Here.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Here.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Here.
All present.
Okay, board discussion. We start with the FY 2020 budget discussion. Today, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening Chairman, members of the board. Mr. Stevens and Ms. Mellon. We're here tonight just to present an overview and a hot, the highlights of the county administrators' fiscal year 20 proposed budget. We'll also provide a recap of the discussions to date, including where the county is in its budget process and where we are headed next in the process. In terms of the budget process to date, we've had five public meetings thus far. We started back on January the 22nd when we had our first pre-budget public hearing. We've now had two budget neighborhood forums. We had one on March the 14th and a second after the proposed budget was released, that was on April the 11th. We also had a public hearing on our budget on April the 9th. And of course, we're here tonight having a budget work session on April 23rd. We have two future meetings regarding the budget process currently. We have our next meeting, which is also a work session, that's scheduled for next Tuesday, April 30th, also at 4:00 PM at the same location. And then we're slated to adopt the budget on May the 14th. That is a 5:00 PM regular meeting, also held in this building. So dive in a little bit more into the details of the operating budget of the county, also referred to as our general fund. The total fiscal year 20 proposed budget is 211.8 million. That represents about a 2.9% increase from fiscal year 19. But as you know, we have a two-year budget and comparing the proposed budget for 20 to the, to the plan for 20, it's only about a 1.3% increase. The vast majority of the county's revenue is derived from real estate and personal property taxes. That's the first line item there under general property tax at 137.1 million. That amounts to about 2/3 of the budget. And as I previously mentioned, of the overall $5.9 million increase from 2019, the majority is from the general property taxes. Fiscal year 20 is a non-reassessment year. Therefore, that increase is really attributable to anticipated growth and then also an increase in our delinquent tax collections because of some of the efforts by our treasurer's office. The proposed budget does include no fee increases to the real estate or the personal property tax rates. The next largest contributor is other local taxes. That amounts to 28.1 million, or about 13% of the budget. This includes the sales tax, the additional 1% historic sales tax. It also includes lodging tax and meals taxes. The other category includes our charges for services. The proposed budget does include some slight fee increases in our parks and recreation areas, specifically in the rep center memberships, and also our before and after school programs, as well as summer camp. And it includes fee increases for the recovery fees for ambulance transport services provided by our fire department. Also included in that line item is the new proposed fee for service for recycling. That's expected to generate about 1.4 million, and that in turn would be used to pay for the estimated expenditure increases of the curbside recycling program. So turning to the expenditure side of the budget, our operating fund again is broken down into departments. At 110.5 million, the school division does receive the largest portion, about 52% of their overall operating fund. The proposed funding represents a $2.3 million increase from the current fiscal year 2019. Public Safety receives the second largest allocation at 29 million. That reflects about 14% of the budget. The school division and Public Safety combined comprise about 2/3 of their overall budget. That means the remaining 1/3 is allocated to all the other county departments. Also from that 1/3, we fund our capital projects, our debt service, or our debt obligations, funding to our outside agency partners, and also our transfers to our other funds. Moving on to our capital projects fund, we've presented here both our revenues, which we refer to as our sources, and the proposed expenditures, or the uses, for the five-year proposed plan. The sources and the uses should balance, and they do. On the revenue side...
That's good.
...on the revenue side, the majority of the funding does come from the general fund, so that's the very first line under your revenues. And then on the expenditure side, you can see that the budget can fluctuate greatly from one year to the next. So for example, fiscal year 20, we're at 15.7 in total projects. The very next year, the proposed plan is at 25.5. We do a five-year plan so that we can see that volatility. We have a view of what's in the pipeline and we can plan for it. This involves discussions around revenue forecasts, future borrowings, what projects are good to borrow for versus those that may not be as good to borrow for, and also projecting out our fiscal policies and making sure that we're staying within the constraints that we've set for ourselves so we can meet those future obligations. We also have to consider the operating impacts of certain projects. So here again, for example, the opening of a new fire station, or perhaps a new school, would require ongoing operating expenditures, specifically personnel, supplies, facility maintenance, items of that nature. And we need to project those costs and identify the strategies on how we would pay for those costs, if there's a way we can streamline our operations and have some, some cost savings. In terms of the budget feedback that we've received thus far in the budget process, these are the three areas that we've noted from the discussions to date. Purchase development rights, school funding, and then also the curbside recycling, the transition to a fee-based program. We would also look to the board tonight for any guidance on any other topics you might want to cover in more detail at the next work session on April the 30th. And with that, that concludes my remarks. Answer any questions you may have.
And if you have any questions over any particular items, you know, any pages, you don't want us to spend any time on your CIP, or whatever, just let us know, we're here to answer those for you. I think the big thing is, it really isn't much different than what you all had planned for last year, other than the things that were noted up there.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could mention one thing that is different in the proposed budget that we would recommend you include, as, as we were putting the budget together, state law was coming along to talk about more officers or Commonwealth attorneys required for police officers with body cams. And in talking with our Commonwealth attorney, what he would have preferred, we were funding an additional position anyhow, so we met that with one. So we were covered for James City County or Williamsburg, whichever way you want to go. But because Williamsburg has the same, meets the criteria as well, he really was due two attorneys. So we were funding one, he was really due two, and the state law passed as we were giving you the budget. And talking with the Commonwealth attorney, what he would prefer is two paralegals and replace of that extra attorney, which from my standpoint is a similar kind of dollars. From his standpoint, allows him some more flexibility in his office. He could certainly demand that we do it July 1st. In talking with him, we had said, would Jan, would January 1st work for you as well? He said, absolutely, I could make that work. So our recommendation would be to include money for two paralegals for half a year in this budget that then would be included going forward. But state law does require that our Commonwealth attorney is owed those two positions, and his compromise is something that he can agree to and said it would really help his office functionality. Chairman, do you remember the number for that?
I believe it's approximately 50,000.
For half a year, which again will turn into 100,000 for the full year, and Williamsburg would share their proportionate share.
That is the net amount?
Okay, that's our side of it.
That's our side, yes.
And then an offsetting place for revenue that I didn't have when we were putting the budget together is our jail cost. Our superintendent there is beginning a program where he's charging for communication services, and he's expected to generate almost $400,000 more next year. So we, as the locality, we had adopted at the jail board their budget a month or so ago. The finance committee for the jail has suggested that we reduce the locality's contribution to next year, and that results in about an 80,000 or 90,000 dollar savings to us. So in terms of the Commonwealth attorney's ask, we could fund that from the reduction of what we would pay the jail.
So from my understanding, these, neither one of these are in the proposed budget right now?
They are not.
Okay, so that, they would have to be before we adopt in, in May, a bit back to each year.
Correct. We would want to make sure you're okay with that, and if you are okay with that, we would then have it in the budget to be adopted at your May meeting, hopefully.
And the state's mandating positions, providing health funding?
It was mandated. If we as a locality want to have body cams, that's our choice. And we believe body cams are beneficial, but if you choose to have body cams as a locality, and Williamsburg and James City County both have, then you have to provide these positions because right now, the interpretation is that the attorney's office has to view all body cam footage for any incident, which is hours and hours and hours. Because if three officers are in the room, that's not one, looking at one officer's perspective, it's looking at all three. And so that's where the state has said, if you want to have body cams, fine, but you've got to help with the requirement to review the footage, which, I know the Commonwealth attorney's working on some argument there, but right now, they're having to look at hours and hours of footage to make sure that they are representing correctly.
Let me ask a question. In previous times I've been doing the budget, we normally we had like an errata sheet for changes.
Yes.
So I guess after our discussion today, you've come up with the errata sheet that we can then look at?
Yes.
Okay, very good, that's what I wanted to hear.
With any changes, we'll, we'll provide the walkthrough.
Okay.
Here is the proposed, here's any of the changes from proposed, and here's your adopted.
Any other questions overall?
I had a question. I continue to get questions about the recycling, and I have concerns as well, just because I'm, I just watched a news piece about the, about our trash being too trashy. And so they, they took San Francisco, who happens to be doing a really great job at sorting and that type of thing, but it has taken a tremendous amount of education to get citizens to that point. And so I was wondering, are we gonna, right now, we kind of take, we take a lot in our bin. Is that going to stay the same, or are we going to see any kind of reduction in what our new recycling contract is going to take?
Yes, there is a change.
Okay, and how are we going to get that education out, one? I mean, I know you've talked about it a lot, but, and you're still meeting, I'm answering the question in that group.
I love that you know all these answers.
And, but the, and I know you've answered this before, but just the, probably that one of the first or second highest questions I get is, if we see a bunch of people opt out, is the cost going to go up? Are we going to absorb that for a year?
That's what I've been asked as well.
What is we doing?
What happens if people opt out? What, what happens to that contracted amount?
Do you want to answer that question?
We can, it's, the cost is a combination of tonnage and the number of, of users. So as people opt out, the tonnage will go down, okay? So it's, it's an estimate.
It balances?
Well, we hope it will, okay? But it is, it's an estimate as of right now.
What Sue shares is absolutely right. What we also negotiated with, with the contractor, and we asked specifically through VIPSA to make sure, is that if, what if we only had 10,000 customers? What does that mean? And they really got to a number that you are paying a unit price per customer, they got into some, some concerns over density, in terms of if you had 100 customers in one neighborhood, and now you only have one, that might be some concerns, we might have some issues to work through. But overall, we could have a significant drop in participation, and the county cost would reduce proportionately. So it shouldn't cost us more than the $7 fee, although we've made some assumptions on the number, and some of the staffing are fixed costs, whether we have one customer, or 10,000 customers, or 25,000. But our cost to the contractor would be significantly less if we have less customers.
So then, have you gotten, have you all worked out any, I know it's been a couple weeks since you talked about recycling, are we any further into the education piece? Like how are you going to let people know about what's the change coming?
Sure. So there is a recycling hotline with some pre-recorded messaging.
Okay.
And that's the 253-6700.
Okay.
On there is an explanation about the change, the timeline, information about billing, carts, and acceptable materials. And in terms of those acceptable materials, the plastics, we have been accepting most plastics. Now it's just one and two bottles. It sounds like a huge reduction, but it's really not. When you ask all the operators and haulers, the majority of what goes into the recycling cart are those ones and two bottles. Three through sevens will be your clam shells, like the salad containers, and yogurt containers, and butter tubs, plant containers, toys, those larger bulky items that, they really aren't being recycled right now anyway. So, so ones and twos is the big change. Other than that, that contamination issue in terms of things that were never supposed to be in there, like the pizza boxes and the food waste, and the plastic bags, and styrofoam, and hangers, and the problem, things that have always ended up in there. So we're really pushing that education piece. There's the hotline, we're giving presentations whenever asked, civic organizations, neighborhood groups, schools, anyone who is asking, or will come set up a table at the back of a meeting. We had a representative from VIPSA and our office go do that at one of the neighborhoods last week at their community meeting. So just every chance we get, the website's being updated, the message, you know, as more information comes in, we're, we're updating our message, and, and the general services staff is all informed on how to answer those questions.
And Ms. Alexia and Ms. Boone were at a community meeting last week and did an excellent job presenting information and providing materials after the meeting as well.
Yep.
They're out there, working hard.
That's great. Great.
But it is, there's some important questions here about what we want to be doing, and you know, again, I recognize we're kind of having to make a quick decision here to get this thing going. I, I hope that we will keep in mind, if we think there's a value to recycling, the option of doing this as part of our general property, general operating budget, because the, if everyone was then eligible to participate, the per household cost would be much lower through the use of property taxes and other sources.
And I think, you know, what we talked about as well, is in this five-year period, looking into trash collection and recycling, and you know, giving us enough time to, to get a good program in place and educate the, the other haulers that are out there that may be affected by that, and you know, if they can fit into the system, or if they may have to do another game plan, and other county administrators, you know, working on that force, and, and you know, trying to get that back to us, before we end up having to make a, our next decision on, you know, after our five-year contract runs out, have something in place that, you know, we might be able to get the costs down, do recycling trash and everything all in one, and do it more countywide, so we get more people involved, which is going to drive our costs down.
Yeah.
And the only other thing I would mention on recycling is, we talked about maybe having a $7 fee for residents and something different, if we had, we could bill en masse, and I think staff has talked me out of, in talking with you, that we ought to be back and start with a $7 fee. And what the HOAs at least initially talking to have not seen tremendous value in a slight reduction of the fee to, to bill en masse. So I think rather than complicate that initially, if you choose to implement the fee, we would recommend it stay at $7 for all households, and then if we have HOAs through the year that want to do something different, we can bring back that and talk about that as it makes sense later.
Is, is there going to be an option for, for those folks who might want to pay their bill annually though, to get a reduction based on the fact we don't have to do mailings?
I think, I think initially, it's, it's just cleaner for us to run it as a $7 fee. If you want us to try to work that, we would do it, but it wouldn't be significant. And the other side of it, we likely would still mail a bill that would just show a credit, so they wouldn't get lost and just having a once a year bill. So I don't know that we'd have, you're talking four times a month, so you're only, you're talking in terms of mailing, you're talking about a dollar savings per year in postage versus an HOA that we could only mail one bill and maybe pick up 2,000 customers. There was some significant postage savings there, but for the individual, there's not, it's not significant, in my opinion, to make that distinction today. I do think the question is, do you want us to charge the fee, or do you want us to do it in, in the general tax revenues? And that's something we, staff would probably go, phew, if you just say do it through property taxes, because it's a lot of work to get it spun up and set up, and they're ready, and I think we're in good shape to do that. But I, yeah, I think the $7 fee's reasonable, but it's where, where you want to take us in terms of, do we allow it to be a, if people want to participate, they participate, or do you feel strongly enough that you really want most of our residents that are currently recycling to continue? Because we will lose some when they have to pay. They can still take it to the drop-off sites free of charge, but there'll be some that choose not to do that and throw it in their garbage. And we've had some say, well, that'll up your garbage cost, and because we're not in the garbage business today, it may affect the garbage costs for communities over time, and may ultimately affect the county if we get into that business. So there are some trade-offs in that if people choose not to recycle.
And I think the sheriff even sent a, a email out asking, could he save money by dropping it off?
I think there was an article about your county that, and we're mimicking
Right.
their program as well, so that it is a voluntary program, and you can drop it off at the county, drop-off sites that go charge if you want to do that, but you don't have to participate. And we're going to mail everybody, or at least our plan is to do it as an opt-in, where we mail everybody a bill, and those that pay the bill will continue to recycle, those that won't. That'll be a cue for us, for them, they're not going to participate.
And just to, sort of drove home the point about how close this year's budget is to last year's projections of this year's budget, that this is roughly half the cost. That fee is, covers about half of the additional revenue that we're receiving.
That's correct.
Right. So it's not in terms of growth of any of our traditional things, it's the addition of this new fee?
No, the majority of the revenue growth was, is the fee, and then state sales tax for education, which we passed on to the schools, so. There really didn't allot, yeah, there really didn't allot for much changes to the plan. So.
We voted register. Bring that up, I know we've... Before we get that, okay, let me, let me go to, continue on, on the recycling.
Oh, okay.
Again, because Sue, I talked to Sue earlier, and Ruth I think mentioned it as well, the concern about where, whether, what we're recycling actually gets recycled, or why is that in the landfill? That's one of the most important questions, and, and I think our ability to track and verify that is somewhat limited. And so I, I guess my question is, what is it that we can do to try to follow up on that and make sure that we are getting stuff where we want it to go, so that, because that can be an important factor in making our decisions later on of what we want to do, you know, about how that transpires?
Well, I want to, I want to make sure that we are all on the same page and telling everyone the same thing, that we are doing everything we can to make sure that it is, is part of our contract, is part of VIPSA's reputation. They have a lot of integrity when it comes to that, that's why they don't want to accept cartons, even though TFC says they will. They don't want to accept three through sevens or certain items, because they want to, VIPSA, you know, who owns our contract, wants to make sure that these items are being recycled. So they are tracking it, they will be reporting back. And so what I tell citizens is, if you throw it in the trash can, there's 100% chance it's going to a landfill. If you put it in the, in the recycling bin, there is a very high percentage that it's going to be recycled. So it's our job to do our part to help this industry get back on its feet.
Can you follow up, or can you find out for us what it, what happens when the wrong stuff goes in their recycling bin, and what kind of expense that adds when they have to, if it's contaminated, or if they have to spend time throwing it out, or if it breaks? Because there's some stuff, right, that can get thrown into the recycling bin that can actually break the belts, or, I don't, I watch this thing where like the plastic bags?
Yeah, every 45 minutes, those plastic bags. I, I just had a tour last week at TFC, and they have to lock out, tag out the equipment, climb up there with machetes, cut the plastic bags out, because they're like ropes, and they're fire hazards, they'll stop the whole assembly line. There are a lot of people in there, pickers pulling out the plastic bags, anything long, like roping, or hoses, or Christmas tree lights, wire, it, it does tangle up, so anything like that has to be kept out.
Yeah, so any part of that education we can get out, I think the better, so.
Okay.
I don't want to name names, but I know some people that don't, and I may live with some of them.
Just saying.
Tanglers.
I have to go through the recycle bin.
Ruth, somebody, somebody in households got to keep a straight.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, are there any other questions about recycling, if that's a...
I appreciate everything that you're doing.
I guess the question is, as a board for consideration, are we okay with doing the fee, or do we want to consider paying for it out of the general fund? I mean, that's, to me, that's one of the prime questions, and if... to me, that's one of the prime questions. And if we're okay with the fee, I'd like to get sort of a sense of the board so we can let them know what to put on the errata sheet coming up next week.
I would say leave it as a fee, because I get people of mine that can't recycle and can't get out, you know, they don't have that ability yet. But in five years, I'm hoping that we do it countywide and then we have that ability and we can roll it into the general fund.
And it does affect the two rural districts to a much greater degree. So, okay. All right. So the consensus is we'll leave it with the fee then. Okay.
Yeah, working towards garbage and recycle.
All of it.
Yeah.
Definitely, we definitely.
And reduce.
Yes, number one, reduce the amount of waste.
And you know, if you think about it, when we, when contractors were doing, had the dump going and, you know, we owned the dump, but the contractors were paying for the dump, everybody could take their trash for free. And when we started charging for that and started the tickets, we started getting more trash on the roads because people didn't understand that, hey, you know, we have to change, we had to change how we handled our dump. We couldn't keep that going. So we had to have a service for that to take over the dump side of it because we closed the dump down. And so a lot of people didn't understand that I've been doing it free. I should be able to do it free. So if we can get back to countywide, I think we can, you know, I'm hoping that that will in turn stop the trash on the road to a certain degree. Won't stop at all, but I'm thinking that may gather up some of that trash and people, you know, it'll come out of you. Maybe the general fund is a collection thing for countywide that may end up, people then will, okay, I'm getting something and not have a tendency to throw it out the window, hopefully.
All right.
And just from a process point of view, when you do see it come for adoption, you'll get the ordinance to vote on first and then the budget will come after that because there is a separate ordinance for the recy, the fee.
Okay, very good. All right. Any more questions on recycling? All right. Who was next? You.
The voter register. I know we're, you know, we're a little bit behind on the districts with us. And I know the county administrators address that certain amount to try to bring that up. And the general assembly, I think, can be right. Scott, if I'm going off, but county or the general assembly is going to look at that again, maybe next year.
Yes, sir.
As far as, you know, part of their agenda and maybe bringing that up. And but as we all know, you know, they might look at it and that might be all we get is a look. You know, I'm thinking that, you know, that we can't, we can't make up all that lost space in that amount of time. There's just no way we can, you know, make that up in a one-year period. I'm thinking if we split that to get up to York County and because, you know, that might be a two-year process to get us up to where that is, you know, and at least get us equal to our neighboring jurisdictions with the responsibility they have in that office. And, you know, they can, they mess it up, very easily get arrested and carried to jail for doing your job if you mess them.
Ms. Sheens, what do you, you know, what's your, in your budget, the proposal, I think it would set it up for a two-year cycle. So.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I have met with electoral board members and Ms. Moore as well. I do think that she's underpaid compared to those around us. And so what I was trying to do is something similar to what we had done with county employees as part of the Evergreen Study, where you basically phased it in over a two-year period. Because I understand, I think I shared it too, if you and Sharon helped me on numbers, I do have an email that explained that I believe she's getting a 5% increase that the state's providing. So that won't catch her up to the other registrars, but it does help salary-wise where she is today. And then I was recommending was a $5,000 movement towards getting her closer to where those, say, competing neighboring communities are. But I do think when you look at voting districts and those kinds of things, they have less voting districts in population than Jame City County. So I do think her job is tougher than those around her, just by terms of volumes and the different types of ballots and precincts that she works with. But I was trying to get it there, a step towards it today. It wasn't quite halfway between where she is and where she might ultimately end. But my purpose was to show some commitment towards helping and then trying to see what the state study does next year in terms of movement for registrars as a whole, and does that balance the better?
Okay. So just a quick back of the envelope, it looks like that 5% on hers would give her about 2,800 and then we're proposing 5,000. So that would be, would bring her up to about 63, 64, not quite 64.
I think that's the range.
64 and some change.
64 and some change, okay.
It's almost 56.
And then we would look at this again next year because obviously, now as the, you say the state is looking at this for in the next budget cycle.
Mine says they were studying it to have for their next sessions to discuss.
So we would, we would be able to see what the state does again next time and then determine what we needed to, if we needed to add anything to bring or what we wanted to add.
That's correct.
Would that 5% be for everyone?
Not necessarily, because it's 5% on, it's mandated, again, 5% on the state salary. Okay. And the state mandates the salary and then they're mandated. So they've gone and raised that salary up to a certain dollar amount. So we don't know what York County is going to do or any of the other ones that supplement there. They could put 5% on top or they could just, because the state still does not pay for what they say you have to pay. Okay. So there's a gap. So they may, so a locality may choose, may have said, oh, well, we feel like this is what we should pay the registrar position. And then this just, you know, works toward moving it up. But we don't know, generally, these positions are, have separate agreements with localities. And I don't know what those agreements with other localities are. So.
So the state increase of 5%, would that be just Jame City County or would that be statewide to all registers?
It's statewide based on the state salary, not necessarily on the salary that a person is receiving. Okay. So if the state mandates that the salary is 50,000, they're going to do 5% on that 50,000. If that individual is paid 60,000, okay.
That's up and above.
It's, it's then up to the locality if they pass that 5% onto that individual because the 5% on the 50,000 still isn't reaching that 60,000. So they're still paying above what's required by the state.
Right. Like most of the things.
How much are we paying above what's required by the state? Do you know on this?
On this one, we do not, the board of supervisors historically never supplemented.
So what we're talking about is this pay is basically all state?
Some, 30,000.
How much?
The salary is 55,000 and some change. And of that amount, we receive about 30,000 in reimbursement.
Okay.
So the difference is local.
Okay.
But the state tells us we have to pay 50.
So the 5% would be on the 55, not on the 30?
That's correct. The state's providing an overall 3% raise to all state employees. And then for general registers, they're providing an additional 2.
Okay.
And that's how we got to the 5.
Okay.
Mr. Hippel, your question, that may or may not help with the equity amongst other localities.
Right, that we don't have.
Localities may say, you know, the state share's coming up, but we're not doing more on your overall salary because we're already above that.
Right. But if they're, if they're already doing, say, 70 and that 5 comes up with everybody, then, and you've got somebody at 60, say, and that 5%, everybody's going up to 5%?
They go up 5% on the base twice.
Right, on the base.
Of the 55.
So they get.
But it may mean if you're already at 70, the local board may not, you may just get closer, right? The local supplement may become less and less.
But that 5% is still in that 50 regardless. Everybody's still getting that 5% on the 50, but the locality's covering up the other 20.
No. So it's just, it's, it's 5% on the 50, yes, but that's the amount that you have to pay the registrar. Okay. So then it becomes 55, just for, 52.5, I guess is, it would be a 5%. Okay. You don't have to give that 2,500 on top of the 70.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, that's extra.
Right. So let's just say as an example that the county, the general, York County, and I don't know this for a fact, but they're giving a general wage increase of 2%. Okay. Registers are getting this 5%. The York Board of Supervisor could say, hey, we'll just give you, you're following the agreement now is you get whatever raises the county gives and not what the state gives, which is actually what we do with the sheriff's office. So the sheriff's office follows our pay plan. So whatever we give and whatever you decide to give as wage increases, sheriff's office has an agreement with the board of supervisors that says, we're going to follow your pay policies. So if you're giving 2% and the state's giving 5%, we're only taking 2%. Okay. You know, if it's the state's giving 2% and the county's getting 3%, we're getting 3%. So they follow our pay policies and there's an actual agreement. So that way, everybody knows that that's what it is. And that's, I'm making an assumption that that may be in place with other registers throughout the state, you know, the ones that do supplement, because there are, I'm not quite sure what their numbers are off the top of my head, but there are some, we're not alone in not supplementing the registrar's salary.
But we supplement the sheriffs.
We do not. We do not, we do not supplement any of the constitutional officers. We do supplement the staff underneath.
Okay.
Okay. So we don't, the ones, yeah, so the ones that are elected slash appointed, the board of supervisors has not chosen in the past to supplement any of those salaries.
And just before somebody calls us out, when you look, you do 5% for some where the retirement piece, where the state mandated retirement. So if you ask about the salary versus something, there's a 5% number there for you because the state required employees to start contributing to the retirement system some years ago. And so some of our constitutional officers, you were required as a board to pay that 5%. So if you look and somebody says, well, no, no.
Yeah, we're still paying.
We don't, we don't above what was required by the state.
And additionally, again, the state has different formulas for different, so like the treasures has some formula that was created in the 1980s. And it's still the same formula as to what they will pay us.
So Ms. Mormon's staff is paid for out of her budget through the state, like the, or through us?
Through us.
Okay. So her staff receives the same pay that, but we don't have an agreement in place like we do at others because we've not supplemented her salary. Like we don't have an agree, like we have with Commonwealth's attorney you were just talking about.
Um, her staff is not paid by the state. Okay. Whereas the other ones, they're state, they are paid by the state. So that's the reason why there's an agreement, because those state salaries generally are very, very low. Okay. So then there's that agreement with the board to be able to set out, this is what the board agrees to supplement. And then generally, the opposite side is that they follow our pay policies. And so that way, there's consistency throughout. They're going to follow, you know, we're going to get, they're going to get the raise that everybody else gets and they follow the same policies that everybody else does.
How did, do we know how we got into a situation where, not we, but this Commonwealth, I guess where the voter registrar was paid so it has not kept up at all with where it should be. But I'm not, it's not a county, that's a, that's a Commonwealth question. But how did that happen?
Yeah, I don't have the history to know that, other than it's like a lot of things. Until you get out there and you determine, hey, we're really having trouble retaining people and localities are supplementing. And some of the pushback to the state to say, hey, you ought to, you ought to look at that and do better. And that's leading to, the registrars have been working as well as some of the localities to try to have their salaries studied. And I think that happens in any of our professions. We're having trouble in public safety here. We did things for public safety based on not being able to recruit or retain. And I think, I'm sure that's where the Commonwealth is as well, is trying to make sure they are able to retain.
And do we, we know what our local legislators have said as far as supporting getting the voter registrars? You know, I mean, because there's probably a big difference between the number of voters and, I mean, we're increasing.
Right.
Whereas you have some counties that are decreasing and probably don't have full-time voter red, I mean, I don't know. But there's, there's got to be a way to look at it so that you're, you're compensating fairly. But.
I certainly don't know all the nuances. I know in talking with our registrars, you know, population's certainly a good indicator, number of registered voters is certainly a good indicator, number of precincts, all those things make the job a little more complex. So I don't think it's as simple as just population. If you have a, same populations and 80% of ours are registered to vote, and we do have a high registration, I'm making that number up, but we do have a high registration here versus a similarly sized community that only has 40% registered to vote or some other lower number, the job here would be harder. And I think those are the things the study should look into, plus probably some other factors. But I know, no, I know I've been told that will occur. And then we ask how our local delegation feels. I don't personally know, but I think Ms. Mormon, she thought they were supportive. And I know she's had conversations with some, if not all.
Yeah. My understanding was is that I believe they were working toward that. And I think the compromise that the state did was by giving the additional 2% this year with the promise to look at it at, you know, the start of their two-year budget cycle and have the time to come up with a salary study, you know, within their timeframe to determine what those salaries should be versus just doing something immediately. Again, they were taking the time to hopefully do it right. And the very, and they may study it and say, no, these jobs should be paid 70,000. We're still only going to give you 30. You're going to have to pay 70. But, you know, so that may be very well, something that comes out of this study next year. So.
And you think that they'll have that study completed?
As, as much as, I would expect that, you know, as much as you can expect the state to do. It is the beginning of a two-year cycle, say, you know, so you tend to get, I believe, more things that, that come out, particularly with studies and the, you know, with the impact. So you get a lot more, particularly with the funding requests then. And then it just goes through the process as to whether it's, it's fully funded. But I would anticipate that. And the more that you as a board and the electoral board and registers across the state continue to put pressure on the state to do something with the salaries, you know, that is, that should happen then, or at least have a better chance of that happening.
And then we put pressure on them and they go, okay, we agree, it's 70 and we're going to fund 30. Y'all come up, and we're still supplementing.
And we're still supplementing.
You know, whether we, whether we supplement now or we wait next year and they say, okay, it's going to be a this and you're going to supplement X. We're only going to give you, that's, that's amazing thing. Because you think when you hear it read in the paper, they've increased it. They've increased it, we haven't. But really, they should say, we're going to tell them to increase it. That's how the wording should be said in the papers. We're going to mandate to them that they're going to increase to what we say they're going to pay.
Michael, I think you just broke the code.
Yeah. So I know that, you know, we're talking to them and all, and I know that, I think it's 17 is the difference between the two localities. It could roughly 17,000 in the two. And I know we're at 5 to try to close the gap a little this year. I'm wondering if we should be at 8 to close the gap and then see what happens next year as far as looking at that. Because if, if we're mandated to supplement, or we supplement, we're still paying one way or the other in order to keep good people. And I mean, we did it with the fire department. And that's, that whole turnover there is totally changed, the way the fire service is acting in Jame City County. I mean, they've always acted well, but they now know that I got a career here. I don't have to worry about that dead zone. And, you know, when we changed that several years ago, that was an extremely smart move because what we were paying in overtime, now we're paying in regular time with more people. So, you know, it was a very stark management move on y'all's part to say, hey, we need to change this. We need to look at these numbers and, and find out, you know, why we're losing them and how we keep them. So I'm wondering if that's a.
You know, I think wherever we would like to go, we would support. What I was trying to do is at least show some support to start that process.
Right.
To weigh on the state. I think whatever amount you supplement, doesn't matter where the state salary goes, I think you'll still be, you build that expectation that you wouldn't take that away next year. So I was trying not to get too far ahead of you, but certainly wherever you want to go. If the desire of the board was having other $3,000 in there, maybe we could figure that out. But that was my logic, was not trying to get too far ahead of that state study. We're not currently supplementing the other folks, I say in similarly situated positions. And some of them can make similar arguments that they're not paying what their counterparts are. So I was trying to get you something to stand on as you get that push in future years too.
And the other thing too, is that if you did. And, and the other thing, too, is that if you did decide to do that and the state did step up with salary and said, okay, the salary should be this, then you can, you know, have it where it's only contingent, you know, until a new salary study from the state. And sometimes what the state has done is if people are used to it, you know, then they, they say, well, here's a raise and you can't use it to supplant, which means that you, they're then telling you, you can't take away what you have fronted in, in the past. I know that with, particularly with the Commonwealth attorney, there will be times where a similar situation where they're anticipating the state to do something. And it was in the past, I think, with these attorneys, you know, county had paid for a local attorney and then the Commonwealth attorney said, well, the minute the state gives me one, you know, I'm not gonna ask you for another one. So it, take over what the county had in its good faith done prior to.
Right.
So that's another option out there for you.
Shoot. Oh, I, would it be possible to, to get the, there's probably a list out there about what kind of supplementing is going on, on the constitutional, I mean, is that opening Pandora's box?
We have some limited information. The accuracy of it, I think, is high, but I wouldn't want to say it's 100%. And we did survey just some localities around us to get a sense of that. Some localities do supplement their constitutional officers, some do not. Sometimes they supplement one or another, not all of them. And I don't know that we'd ever figure out the reasoning behind each and every one. But we do have some information relative to that. I'd be happy to share, I'll just put a disclaimer that we believe it to be correct.
Okay.
I haven't seen it published through a source that I would consider credible. It's been contacting me. I haven't seen it that way.
Okay.
But we have asked for that for jurisdictions in the peninsula region. So I do have a number of those. It'd be easy to share with you with a disclaimer.
So, because I've seen, I saw it in the past, so you're saying, like, we don't give Nate Green above what he's, the state says that he is.
Unless, unless he's one of them that gets the 5% that we were required to.
But that's required.
Okay. Because I've seen an amount, then, so maybe that's it, the 5%?
Yeah.
Not the salary.
Well, I think it's important also, we talk supplements, we're talking salary, but the other piece of the conversation is the localities paying up just about 100% of all the benefits. Retirement, the health and, the health insurance, dental insurance, the FICA, give very little reimbursement for that. I think the state percentage is like 2%.
Seriously?
It varies on what type of health insurance coverage. They could take none, or they could take family. But our percentage on average is about 30%.
So constitutional officers are not getting state insurance?
Oh, no.
No, they're on the local plan.
They're on the local plan.
Interesting.
So we're covering that, too.
And the retirement.
And, so what's the state paying?
I'm there, I'm there. I can tell you that's on page B7.
B7.
So, and, and it is, and then each one of the, at least the constitutional officers, we do put the amount to show what, you know, on their, their expenditure page, to show what the net county funding is, how much the county actually is supporting these offices.
Not even half, it looks like.
So, you know, it's, 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 it's not a lot.
I know we do track that information. You know, we track what the salary benefits are compared to what we receive in reimbursement. So we have an idea of what that percentage, the split is between state and local. And when we look at other localities, we have to factor in things like, you know, the sheriff in some localities provide law enforcement.
North York.
Do not. In York County, the sheriff is serving two localities. So I know there's a supplement, but it's because he's representing York County as well as the city of Pocosa. So you have to look at those factors as well when you're doing the comparisons.
Reminder.
So these, so employees in the Commonwealth attorney's office are local employees, but...
Yes.
But authorized by the state?
Yes.
Then he authorizes us to pay for them.
Yes.
But they give us some salary, but no benefits.
They give a little, they do give a little bit of, a very small percent on, on benefits.
A portion of the FICA and I think 1% of the IRS. And our rate's about 12.
Other discussion on it? That's depressing enough.
So, Michael, you were, are you comfortable staying at five, or did you want to propose we go to eight?
I propose we go to eight. I don't think it's gonna.
And we do so, understanding that we, that it's subject to.
You can?
Whatever.
That is the state.
In other words, we're gonna look at it again next year.
Yeah.
But we're gonna take into consideration what the state is, it may or may not do.
Yep.
And given the tone of the conversation here, I'm not holding out a whole lot of hope the state's gonna do a whole lot for us.
I'll do whatever I can.
Thank you.
I'm proud, baby.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
We're counting on you.
Thank you very much. Is there, is there a consensus on the work for that? Okay.
All righty. Next issue, any other, something else they want to?
I've got a few more.
Okay.
Um, PDR, green space, the, basically the toolbox that we're thinking about creating, you know, what it ends up being called, or it's called, what it's always been called, or whatever. How do we get that ball rolling and, and what funds are available? We've got some set aside now, which is not enough to, it's enough to get started, but not enough to really put a big dent anyhow. But how do we?
As one part of that, let me, let me just, can we ask that we spend some time at our next session, looking at our, at our debt situation, you know, what's likely to come rolling off of that in the next several years, where we are. And when will our financial folks come by to, you know, the, the board folks?
We generally haven't had them come, only when we have an anticipated borrowing, but we can have them, you know.
I guess I thought we, annually, but not.
Not necessarily annually, but we can. I mean, that's, that's totally within, set something up so that way they can come and give you an overall.
Give us some idea about things like what the interest rate environment is, what kind of flexibility we have, given our goals and objectives, but just so that we have the full picture of whether we want to do pay-as-you-go or borrowing or whatever.
Okay.
I guess from this, this budget standpoint, there's nothing dedicated in this budget to that program because we're in the process of getting it evaluated and maybe the board making a decision to stand it up. So we still have little.
We have funding that's left over. I think it's a couple, 200, 300,000, is that correct?
I thought we had 1.3 million set aside.
Yeah.
Well, not, no, not, not that. I mean, I'm talking about what was left over in the old PDR.
It's about 300,000.
About 300,000.
Yeah, it's about 300,000. And the 1.3 million in both years is, or.
Whatever.
It's, it's land purchases. It's, it is not designated necessarily for, and it has to come back to the board for a spending authority.
But just as, just as a reminder, we're gonna have a work session, I think, in June.
Yes, sir.
On, on PDR and such issues. And we decided at that point that, that our current staff is adequate to be able to effectively plan a program and be able to have someone to recommend to get up and running. And that's great. If we determine we need some additional staffing in that regard, then that green space funding might be a source that would be available for that, for our staff.
Well, I'm confused, because I thought that 1.3 million dollars was money that we set aside for, like, schools and that type of thing. Or fire stations, or.
I think it was put in for, for a multitude of possibilities. But that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about the specific money that's already in PDR.
Okay, okay. So you're talking about the, what is left over from PDR?
About three.
Okay, so you're talking about a staff person coming out of that money?
Right.
Okay.
But until we have the discussion.
Yeah, no, yeah, it would be, in other words, we, once we have the discussions, if we want to stand something up in that year, we don't have anything dedicated in this particular budget, but we do have leftover funds from before that we could be using it, we could direct or stand up with the program and, and to start it, get it started.
And just to remind me, the comp plan letter that went out, or survey, that, that had a question on it about green, green space, right? I mean, we know, we've heard from a, from a group, we've had people come to our meetings and say that it's very important to them. But it, that also had.
Didn't have a lot of diving down into that kind of detail. We did talk about having a strategic plan survey, and I think of your conversation in June, say, we really want to get into conservation of property, whether it's purchased, whether it's PDR, whether it's just an easement, those kinds of things. And I think we'd have more specific questions as we send a broader survey out this fall to make sure you're headed where the community wants you, so you could reinforce that, but...
Yeah, just because I just want to make sure that we are also, like, how do we know, is it just any, I've not, it's not been here since I've been on the board. So do we just want any land? Do we just, is there certain areas of town that we want to aim for? Is it, is it?
I think that's, I think that's what we have to do, because in, in the past, it was, all right, we got the money, whoever wants to, it just comes to us.
Right.
And what, what we're looking for.
To us be more targeted?
We're looking, I'm looking for a much more targeted approach. In other words, what is it that we as the board want to protect?
Okay.
Where? And, and we have all these different tools we can use. And we may or may not purchase development rights. We may actually outright purchase a piece of property. We may actually just do a conservation easement. But whatever we, we come up with that, you know, that is, that's the program where I think we need to be targeting what we want and go out and try to find it. Now, sometimes people will still come to us and we may have to make a decision about whether that fits into our vision of what we want for the county or not. And some people, we might say, no, we're not willing to do it, when other people would say, yeah. And it could work hand in hand with a, you know, with somebody with a larger piece.
Yeah.
Saying we could, you know, if, if, instead of developing the whole piece, we develop a corner over here and we protect the rest.
An easement on the rest.
Yeah, so that's what we're trying to, you know, get out of staff is, you know, and help us work through the process of, what are all the tools and what are all the revenues? Maybe we partner with, with a private entity where we can buy this and, or conserve it or, you know, whatever, but looking at how we would.
And maybe some of that money, prior to getting a staff person in here, too, is to have somebody help us find, I mean, a vision for.
Will the comp plan help take care of that when we, when we update that, go through that process? That will be laying out a lot of what people's, people's visions are as well.
True.
Sure, right. But I, I do think we have a lot of information that we've already gathered over the years, including a set of criteria that have been used by PDR committees and green space committees in the past that have ranked properties and given them scores based on whether they have a particular environmental value, an agricultural value, a scenic value, a historic value, or what. And we have, you know, a variety of ways of addressing this kind of things. We've done everything from, as you say, gone out and purchased a piece of property and, and held it, to going out and buying a piece of property, putting a conservation easement and then selling it to somebody else and sometimes, you know, recouping most of the cost there. We have certain properties that we've been able to utilize to draw down significant grant funding from the federal government and from the state government and from other sources. And so, you know, on the one hand, yes, we want criteria. On the other hand, we don't want to have a program that's too inflexible, that we can't take advantage of some opportunities that might present themselves. And I'd hope that we'd be thinking in terms of the question of whether we want to be involved in borrowing more broadly than just PDR. I think it's a question of whether there's an opportunity for us to think strategically about PDR or other land conservation programs, plus acquisition of land that we know we will need for public facilities, and perhaps funding that we might need to improve public facilities we already own, public lands we already own, that we intend to utilize in some particular way. So I'm, I think that that really is, is what we, what we ought to be thinking about in broader terms. And I think it's, you know, it's a big discussion, but, you know, we gotta get started. That's why we have to get information about our borrowing potential and things like that.
And to Mr. Mormon's earlier point, I do think if the board says, we really want this to be a priority for the county, we really want you to put a lot of effort into outreach and finding, developing the program's probably the easy part overall, once we get to the details. It's the administration, day-to-day contact. If we're gonna be proactive in areas that we're concerned about development pressures, that's gonna take somebody or some bodies to do those kinds of things. But I think you have that discussion after you decide where as a board you want us to be headed.
And the big thing, too, is when, once we get started, biggest thing I heard was the delay time.
Yeah.
The long, drawn-out process of doing anyhow. You know, we need to do that on everything and start shortening those processes up and, and making them more condensed. And, you know, it's up to us to how do we figure out, how do we get through those hoops and jumps as we move forward.
And then are we gonna be able to, since we have this, the 1.3 million for land in whatever terms we want to use it for, how are we gonna juggle whether we need it for school, if, how, you know, using it for conservation? How, how are we gonna juggle all that to make sure that we're putting it in the right place with our future needs?
I think one of the things we're looking at right now is from the school liaison aspect, is we're, we're gonna, we're going to need to do some significant funding for schools. You know, I believe we're probably gonna need that elementary school, and they're still in the process of trying to, you know, acquire the land. And if we get the opportunity, you know, if that money's, if that's money in the bank, we could, if we could find a piece of property, we have the money to commit for it. And to me, this is something where you get back a little bit into the pay-as-you-go operation. That's money set aside that I'd like to see putting in, into that long-term schools, personally. I mean, we can use it for other things that the board so decides, but my goal or my vision would be that we keep that money for, for the school construction. Because when it comes along and there's a big bill and we're gonna have to float, you know, debt to be, to pay it, or we can pay down upfront, buying the property or whatever, the less we have to borrow.
Yeah, again, I, I think that we're gonna find that, that you do have, have a bit of flexibility on some of this, because, you know, we did a great job, I think, in planning for one of our schools, was it James Blair that we, where we did the, no, it wasn't James Blair. Where did we, yeah, it was, it was James where we put the money aside, so that, so we could reduce the costs. And then we had that, we had dedicated two cents toward that, and then that was money that was available for the operational cost of the building once it opened up.
That's right.
And that was, that was very, very smart, very strategic, very good job. But we, I think, have to sort of think about a couple of different things. One is that we know our debt is coming down at a fairly good clip, so that does give us some opportunities. Then ask the question of, in the long run, is it cheaper for us to do pay-as-you-go or to recognize the places that you know you're gonna need to get and buy them before the development pressure increases and the costs increase dramatically? I don't know. You know, it's not, it's not a single, a single answer, I don't think.
No.
It's a complicated issue, too. And, and we gotta be.
And also, we gotta remember that, you know, I'll keep on preaching it, the New County Compl.
The Hill Building, Hill Building.
Get that off there, it's coming, it's coming your way soon.
I didn't, I apologize. I had a, prior, we got, we moved on before I had a second question. And, and that was about schools. Is now, is it now an okay topic?
That's actually the next one on my list, was schools. I think somebody had mentioned it.
Before, can we, can I just ask if we, if we can just maybe focus on revenues for a minute?
Sure.
Just because that's the beginning of the, at the beginning of the.
No worries.
So I wonder if we might have any better sense, and I realize we're only talking a month since this document was prepared, but whether there's any sense of the trend line on the new, the 1% sales tax?
It, it actually, so far, is coming in close to where we projected, basically enough, because that was, and if you, if you look, it's on page B4, we have separated it out, the budget had at about 4.5 million. Right now, we're projecting it to come in at about 4.6. Okay, so, but interestingly enough, our local sales tax, so we had about, it just was the percentage between what is the meals and what is non-mails. Okay, so that's sort of the difference there. So. So, once we get a good, probably three-year trend line on that, we'll feel fairly confident as much as we can with sales tax. But it is coming in close to where we had originally projected.
And where do we think that there are some issues? I know this recordation tax is, and I assume that has to do with people not refinancing as much as they did and the fact that we're not growing...
Actually, it's related to one particular timeshare in our community that went from actually selling property to going to the contracts, so they're no longer doing their recordation fees. So, yeah, I think we're, and I'm not familiar with the newest contracts, but I think it's where you have a contract for a certain amount of points, you know.
And does that get filed with the state or locality?
Of course not.
Might be an opportunity for a feeder.
If I can just point out, since you were talking about the 1.3, that 1.3 in the CIP is only allocated in year one.
Yeah.
Because in the two-year budget, we had put it in both last year and this year, and it was for future needs. So in the future out-years, it is being allocated to various different projects based on the requests that had come in for the need. So if you, you know, want to review some of that, or if you direct this to say, well, no, we prefer to still be building that fund every single year, then we'd have to look at cutting out some of those.
I think that's something that I would hope the board would have an opportunity, maybe this fall, as we go into the budget prep for next year.
Okay.
Because that week, we could have that discussion, because, you know, we've sort of taken this 942 money and set it aside, and we've decided we wanted to use it for one-time things as opposed to recurring. We didn't want to bake it into the budget, if you will.
Right.
And I think it's probably wise for us to continue doing that, but the problem is, what projects? Because you all had a list of projects that you, you know, that you came up with, and we decided how much money we were going to do. But I think what we ought to do is, we need to have a, maybe late in the fall, as you prep for the budget prep session, where we can give guidance on how we would like to see that allocated. And, you know, I'm pretty flexible on, you know, as long as we're doing the capital or the one-time type stuff.
But what we, what this budget reflects in those out-years is that $4.6 million all going in future years to capital projects.
Capital projects, yeah.
So capital projects by their nature are one-time.
Yeah. And just a matter of how much we want to set aside into maybe one, into this particular fund, if we want to do that.
If you want to, right, if you want to be using to build up some fund money versus, you know, it's helping the maintenance items and the...
So is that true, that whole 4.6?
In the out-years.
In the out-years.
Yeah.
Because, you know, some of the operational costs were sort of anticipated to be shifted out of that, weren't they, like the...
There were some, one time...
The police officers.
Yeah, the one-time costs were, there are some in the operational for this particular year, FY '20. Okay, but they were almost all one-time costs, except for, there was some about $460,000, I think, that was associated with the schools around, you know, give or take. But just for that long-term planning process, it was, it's easier to just put it over there and park it there. There were requests that were allocated and then just allocated.
And I think that's something we need to evaluate as to what the requests are, whether it's something we would, where we want to go. But I think it's only fair to give you that kind of guidance from the board early in the process before we're building the budget for the next year. And it brings me back to one other thing, and that is the, the school, the money that was actually refunded from the schools from the prior year. I think it was 800, 900,000 or something, was it?
Yes, and that has been increased in the capital.
And that's been, and all of that has been put into the school capital for this year, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so it's considered a revenue source to put into school capital for this year?
That's correct.
Okay.
I have one last, well, ALS, BLS, fees, is that consistent with what is being reimbursed by insurance companies now?
Yes, it is, well, I'm not quite sure with insurance companies, but it is consistent with the fees that are charged both at York and Lincoln.
And on the public service revenue, does that reflect this creek?
Not yet. We do not believe, I talked with the commissioner's office, and we do not believe that it's going to show up. He doesn't have it yet. If we do get anything, it'd be maybe the second half of the year, so, but it's not included yet.
The PDR funds.
And what is that amount supposed to be? Supposed to be huge.
$450,000, and it would never go away. It would be remarkable, that there would be no depreciation, or at least they couldn't. All those fancy accountants couldn't tell us what the depreciation might be.
But that's a question, you put the PDR. Question, and might be a silly question. Would it be easier to pick a budgeted number, a percentage? And you'll be able to answer this probably very quickly, for like schools. Right now, we're at 52 or 54. We're at 52.
52%. 52. 52, that includes the debt service on schools.
So if we were to, and of course, everything goes up with it, so the 52% this year is going to be 52% next year at a greater amount. What if we lock in a number? Schools from this point on are getting 52% of the budget. And then the school knows ahead of time with our projections, we're going to be within this area. And then it might, by the time they put a budget together and we put a budget together, we don't have to say no, they don't have to say we need this, we all know what we're working within. I mean, to me, it would be, it seemed common sense, not cutting the school, but saying 52% of what we take in is going to go to you. How you use it is your baby. And then they know every year, so we're not going back and forth going, well, I need this, or I don't need that. And they just work it out through the years where they need more, need less, and they know that that percentage is locked in. Is that something, does that make sense?
There are places that do that. The state of California does that by referendum. They were told that they had to give half of all their money to schools. And the problem that is inherent in it works against both sides in some circumstances. For the schools, it would be a big problem if we had a significant drop in revenue. And we decided we would like to be able to prioritize schools.
Right.
And maybe need to push them up to 55 or 56% of the budget in a given year, but if they're, if they're stuck at 52 and a half or whatever, then, you know, they might take a fairly big cut. And there might be another circumstance where, for instance, we decide we're going to create a new fee for recycling, and that fee is going to generate additional revenue for us for a particular purpose, but now our overall budget has gone up and we have to find extra money in order to keep that same percentage in place as well.
Yeah.
So that's really the problem that has been experienced by the businesses that have tried to, so I think, you know, it's, you know, it sounds like it would be a great, a great idea, because then there's much more predictability.
Right.
But unfortunately, revenue and expenditures are not as predictable as we'd like to think.
Yeah, I was trying to think of a way that the school would know ahead of time, project out and be able to go, I know 52% out of this number, next year, this is what we're going to have.
This comes back to what we've been doing in the school liaison committee, and I think the relationship between the city manager, the county administrator, and the superintendent this year has been exemplary. I think that they have, they've reached out, they know what the budget constraints are.
Right.
Might necessarily, not necessarily be able to meet it, but it's been a very cooperative effort in terms of not talking to each other and it wind up a confrontational type of thing. And I think that that's probably more beneficial, because Mr. Glenn brings up a really good point, and that is that, you know, there may be a particular year where we feel we need to boost it, and then there are other times when we may be directing funds to other things that we really don't want to have to commit to it.
Right.
But I think, I think that reaching out to them very early in the process and staying involved as we go through is more productive for us.
I think, well, what I've witnessed through my years is that there's always been a very fluid conversation going on between the county and the schools. Doesn't mean the schools like it. I mean, they are obligated to bring a budget of need. We're, we've got to fund it as best we can. But I think, I mean, am I wrong? I think the CFOs are talking a lot, there's an expectation that, they're pretty open about, okay, I want to tell you what my budget's going to be, and even though there's that conversation going on, the school says, well, that's nice, but this is what we need. And, you know, they're in the same boat where they're, they've got the stuff that's not being, I mean, special ed is just a huge on their budget, and that's not being funded the way that it should be on the federal level. And then they've got so many things on the state level that are not, so then we've got to step in, so it's very, because I think Newport News is actually talking about this right now, trying to find a way about, is there a way we can set a certain amount every year so we're not in this push and pull?
Right.
But, but I think it's just, even if we said that, if they come to us and say, well, that's great that you're giving us 52%, but we need 60. I mean, we're still going to have the push and the pull about what we're going to do, because they have to come with what they need. And we may not be able to...
Mandates can throw that off as well.
Yeah.
Mandate on the county or the school division. And then similar to Mr. Glenn's comment on recycling, the state funding, that's restricted to constitutional officers. So you really have to look at why your revenue's growing and what it's earmarked for, and then what's left over.
Yeah, and then if SOQ's changed, that changed, you know, it's just, it's so implausible.
It's not easy. I was just trying to think of...
No, yeah, I mean, it's...
Yeah. Take out the...
The stress from everybody.
Right.
You know, the school board, you know, wouldn't be stressed about, gosh, you know, I need this, I've got, because they're doing a great job over there, and they need the stuff, and, you know, I was just trying to figure out a way. Now, another subject you brought up, John, a while back, and it might be a time, I don't know, bringing up bright beginnings and setting up the...
Like auxiliary locations?
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea when you brought, year, two years ago, and said, hey, we need to start looking at this, and, you know, I think it'll take a load off the schools as far as students and their capabilities and what they have in the schools, you know. Is that something we want to try to help out or try to school liaison?
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to force something that's not to work on the schools, but I do feel that there, there's at least an opportunity for a conversation about it, to gather some information, to see whether that might be an appropriate way to go about addressing both the short-term, whatever pressure there is on elementary school spaces, and to maybe have a much more vibrant, I mean, we have a very good preschool program, but to have the facilities that were designed actually for preschoolers might make some sense.
I think what we're going to hear, I mean, we can certainly take that to school liaison. I think what little bit they've told us back so far is that that's not what they would suggest is sound educational practice. But also, you know, preschool's not mandated. Now, what's mandated is that you have to, you have to provide services for children two and up with their, so the question that I got back when this was brought up before is, do we want to invest in a separate type of capital building for something that isn't mandated? So...
Right, and of course, the counterargument to that is, but you are expanding that program year by year.
Anyway, yeah.
And taking away elementary school classrooms in the process. Moving them from their original purpose into a different use, and therefore creating more demand for new elementary school.
And I'm wondering what the cost reduction would be in building a few auxiliary spots.
Well, that's what would be useful to know.
And then how many classrooms are actually being utilized now in elementary schools by bright beginnings? And then if those, if those facilities can be built at a, maybe it's more cheaper cost, but we're talking money, if it can be done less expensively, how many classrooms is that going to free up for us? And then how does that line up to where we're really looking at the need for an elementary school in the future? And where does that, does that push that out further, or?
One of the things I've asked to be brought back to the school liaison is, you know, when they went through this with the high schools about, do we build another high school or do we do expansions? And they did their analysis, and they came up with the idea that we'll do the expansions. I said, I know that they probably went through that same exercise with elementary schools, but we haven't really been privy to the process that they went through. So I've asked them to bring, come back and have an in-depth discussion of that, because what I wanted to find out was, okay, you know, maybe they'll tell us, these three schools are physically constrained, it can't be expanded, or, you know, and, or what the factors were that they considered and how they got to where they got. Because if you take the magnitude of the need, the number of students, you know, if you get to where you have a need to house an additional 600 students, but you can only add 100 to three schools, it's really not going to help too much in the long run. So, you know, we need to be more comfortable with the analysis that has gone through, they've gone through to come to the conclusion that they wanted a new elementary school as opposed to the expansion on the others. And this is part of that discussion, hand in glove, so I've had the...
I think we have to be careful that we don't make assumptions that, yes, you could save money because we have this.
That's right.
Because you may not, because, and then also remember that a few years ago, probably been longer, they did consolidate, there's fewer, not every elementary school has bright beginnings in it. So there are, you know, I don't know off the top of my head which schools have bright beginnings, but, so there has been one consolidation already of that program. So I think it's probably better to ask the open-ended questions and then also see if it comes up in the, we'll see when they answer the elementary question, but let them know that we have questions about bright beginnings still.
One other thing, when you go back to your liaison meeting, I'd be interested in knowing, because I know the question had been brought up about age-restricted communities such as colonial heritage, and having elementary school numbers coming out of those developments, and where we've landed with that. Do we have, are we comfortable with what sort of results we're getting from that? Is it being corrected? The numbers that we were getting before were showing an increase coming out of colonial heritage at one point, and that's, it's not happening. So, and I don't know off the top of my head how many age-restricted communities we have, developments we have, but I think that's something that we need to make sure that those numbers are being looked at in a, in a way that's realistic before we start talking about all these extra schools and capital projects and everything for the future, so...
I think we also have to keep in mind that sometimes there's a number that, just because you can add on, you know, when you've got your way, Stonehouse at 800-plus, Matoka in the same, you know, maybe you don't want an elementary school with 1,000 kids in it, even if it's possible to add on, and I think that's a discussion that has to be made on their side.
And the other part of it was where you could add on, in some cases requires not only just addition to classroom, but expansion of core space, which, you know, drives up the cost as well. So I think for us to have that discussion in a public venue is really going to be important, because we have to understand what their constraints are, and we need to be able to take, you know, ask intelligent questions about costs, trade-offs, and alternatives. You know, I think ultimately, when you talk about the preschool, bright beginnings, whatever, you know, we've made a lot of strides, because up until recently, they didn't count those kids in there, they were occupying space, but they didn't count them in. And even though it's maybe not mandated, I think we had to probably take a position that it's in the best interest of the kids in our community that we have these programs. So what we have to do is we have to do our analysis based on the fact that they're going to be there.
They're there.
Oh, I think bright beginnings is an important component to our system. The only thing is that we're bringing the children from bright beginnings and putting them into the schools, and I think that's what's driving the elementary school level to, so we're going to have to do something, and it's, and... And it's, and, you know, it's, it's not mandated, but I think it's an important key component to getting the children as young as possible and, and getting them in, educated as much as we can to get them ready for school. And that's where, when, you know, John first brought it up a couple of years ago, I was like, I don't know if that's it. And I kept thinking about it, and, and, you know, once you start thinking about it, you're like, this, this is probably a pretty good program that we could, you know, we're not mandated, but we're paying for it anyhow, and, you know, we're, we're covering the cost.
It amounts to about half an elementary school by now.
Yeah.
It really does. Yeah. It's about 300, I think it's about 300 kids, 340 kids.
I thought they told us it was over 30 classrooms.
That's what I thought.
Because, because of course, there are going to be fewer kids in each of those classrooms.
Yeah, maybe larger than that, yeah.
And that's a significant amount that we could possibly, you know, and I want to help the school with the situation and overcrowding, but, but also make sure we spend our money wisely. And, you know, I, I think John's on a, on a good path as far as investigating that.
Yeah, you had mentioned at one point, too, that if they did build these facilities, you know, onto some of these elementary schools for Bright Beginnings, they would be more tailored towards what preschoolers actually need, rather than-
Trying to fit them in.
Fit them in in other spots, so, yeah.
Because we already have the core space in those elementary schools, but, you know, you don't need the auditorium space for the preschool kids. You don't, you don't have the same kind of athletic facilities or, or playgrounds that you would have for toddlers.
And if we have elementary school locations where this facility can be built, then that takes care of any transportation questions, because we'd already have buses going there anyway.
So, so I'm sorry to, well-
No, I didn't do it. You did.
You did. You did it two years ago, and it's still going on.
Well, I guess the question, coming back to schools, is there anything in particular budget that people want to address as to potential changes from the proposal, or are we kind of, we're pretty set on that?
The only question I had is, did we hear, I guess we haven't heard from the schools, with, with us not fulfilling their request completely, have they said what it is that they would cut?
You know, I don't know that I have an official response, but what I understood in just some conversations were, instead of a 4% raise, they do 3%. And instead of maybe the five counselor positions, they have a position and a half additional, is what I understood. That's not an official, an email or any push in terms of, tell us what. Be happy to ask that, if there's some value to that. I just, some of the conversations I thought I heard from the board was not getting too far into the school's priorities, but just trying to understand what that meant. But those were the two areas that I heard.
Well, we just sat here and told them how to do their preschool.
Well, we'll work on one thing at a time.
Would you be happy to, would you like for us to push more to get that, what that means to them? I'd be happy to.
Yeah, well, and that may require a, a discussion by their board, so I don't, I don't know that we get that necessarily, so.
And it is important to raise, just from the perspective that I think people have been reading in the newspaper about the, the schools, you know, planning to, to spend some money out of this year's budget for buses, and, you know, that's, that's a capital expense. It's a one-time expense that would not be something that could support a counselor, for instance, because then you have to find that money to keep that counselor in the future.
Yeah, and as far as the, I guess our raise is at 3%, and, you know, if they don't have it, they're, teachers are not going to be worse off than our county employees then, from the raise perspective, it's going to still be 3%.
And it meets the state's expectation of 5% over two years?
It does. It doesn't address the issue of our entry-level teachers are still some of the lowest paid in the region. And again, it may be, it's not $5,000 behind, but it is a bad ranking to have the lowest entry salary. So I understand the superintendent's hope and intent to try to address some of those areas.
I know with TPO, PDC, and HR-TAC, being on personal budget, three is about where all the localities are right now. So we're right in line with what the other localities are doing, because we monitor what they're doing in order to figure out raises for, you know, those, our personnel as well there, and that's about right where they're at, between two and three.
Yeah, and that's, you know, that's another place where state is not stepping up. You know, I mean, it's, it's, our checkbook is open all the time, and I think it's very easy sometimes to say, you know, as we start to enter a campaign season, I'm going to cut taxes or no new taxes, but that is, does not, then if you are on the state level and you are saying that, you are then pushing, I mean, we are going to be forced at some point to have to make some decisions. So you're forcing the localities into a, to pick up, you know, I don't want to have to be the lowest-paid teacher, and there's a cost to that. There's a cost to raising taxes, there's a cost to being the lowest, you know, place in the region on, on new teacher salaries. So there's a cost, and it's, it's really, it's, it's just really frustrating. So I guess there's nothing more I can add to that, but anyway. But, yeah, it would be-
Give me your little trick.
Stop scrapping all this starting over.
I mean, I guess the-
Sharon's got to wait. I mean, Susan, I know.
Susan's like, I don't think-
Susan, where?
The, the schools are aware that this is where we are. I mean, we've, we've been pretty upfront.
We have been.
Okay. So, all right.
And I, I have to tell you that I think that that discussion has been very professional and very productive. And as, you know, we're not negotiating this on the front page of the Gazette. That's what's really, I think, improves the process.
Very much so. Good job, team.
Good job.
All right. Are there other, any other budget questions or requests, or anything for the next session?
I'm done.
So the next section, we'll go through the individual departments that are fairly rapid-paced, unless we have particular questions.
What I'd say about this year's expenditure sections, you know, if the board has any particular questions about a department, for the most part, most departments, the only changes are in compensation from, from the plan. And that is where we had set it aside, you know, and now departmental, and then one, then we go and we move it into the departments as, as part of that. So really, a lot of the changes are only that, other than recycling, which is reflected in the treasure and internal services. And some of the things that we're already planning for, like the fire and, and police. So if there were other areas that specifically, we can take a look to see if there's other things that really should be pointed out, but if you notice the, some of it is just adjusting between departments, moving some positions around. There's no, no drastic changes, it's pretty much the same. That is correct.
I would suggest that if, you know, between now and next week, if you find something that you would like further explanation on, that we send an email to-
And then we can have a department-
Yeah.
A division director here, something specific.
Yeah. Let Sue, let Sue and Sharon know, you know, what we're concerned about. They can have the right people here, and then we can do an abbreviated, go walk through without having to go page by page, but we can then hit the ones where we had questions.
If we have questions about, like the five-year capital with schools, and if we have questions about whether or not we're really going to be needing this in year three, four, whatever, do we need to send something back to them for them to discuss it now before we?
No, at this point, what we're, what's set on this one is the F by 20. The rest is for planning purposes. And it adjusts this from year to year. And I think, again, that once we start having discussions this fall, I think the board has to be out in front in giving guidance on what we want to be considered in that project and that budget formulation. And we, it may vary based upon, you know, I mean, what was proposed earlier and what was actually in the budget right now for some of those facilities out there, changed as a result of negotiation with the schools. And so it's given us more time, more breathing room, and I think that's something that we have to analyze on an annual basis.
So with the liaison group and y'all talking, and you've been bringing back and sending information, we can be working on those figures between now and then for the fall to prepare discussions for that. Okay.
Yeah, Miss Allen, I think, I think any question you have on the five-year CIP, we'd want, but in terms of your adoption in May, it's really the next year. So those are the ones that you're approving. The others are planning purposes and what we believe will happen, but things do change as we go forward and have better information.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. John? You okay?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Then we are ready to move on to our next item under Board Discussions, which is a tourism request for appropriation for funding to Greater Ways for Chamber and Tourism Alliance today.
I was just going to add, too, that Mr. Powell was out, if there were any questions about JCSA budget.
I apologize for that. We didn't.
It's okay.
There you go. Come on in. We will defer that moving on to, to the next opportunity. Let's go to JCSA. All right.
This section three.
I only have 25 questions.
I'll do my best.
The one question I think that came up in, in our discussions earlier had to do with the transition with the new water meters to monthly billing.
Yes.
And the timeframe in which you expect that to occur is, will that be in this fiscal year?
It will not be in this fiscal year, no. However, there is a position budgeted for this fiscal year to help with, to prepare for the transition. The, the project itself will not be completed until the fall, so early of the fiscal year 20. And I think, I, I think the prudent thing to do is to give it some time to make sure that everything is working with the new meters. And I would anticipate they would be implemented sometime in the ensuing two-year budget cycle, but it's not part of this, it's not part of this budget proposal.
Okay. I should have, I should have thought to ask this during our Board of Directors meeting, but how are we doing in terms of revenue this year?
Well, as you, as you recall, I made some comments, I think about two months ago regarding our revenue estimates. Our revenue estimates are pretty much on target from what we projected at that time, which is to say we're still behind, but we're, we're, we're trending in pretty much the exact same way that we were at that time. So we've, we still believe that we will be able to handle those issues and, and the manner that was outlined at that meeting with some of the, with some of the reductions in expenditures and some, some transfer of some of the revenues.
And how is the new fixed charge working? Is it replenishing the capital funding?
It is, yes, yes. Yes. Yeah. I think it's working well.
Great. And finally, one other question I just had was, what's our experience been this year with the grinder pumps? Has the pace of replacements moderated any?
You know, if, if you don't mind, Mr. McGlinnan, I'll get back to that. I'm not really, I'm not 100% sure.
Okay. You have that on the top of your head?
Well, we did, yeah, we, we did, you know, we have done some fee raises upon, so we'll try to, try to get it a little bit more.
That brings me back to the, the incremental increases that we're doing over a period of years.
Yes.
How much longer is that, is that schedule to go on?
The rate study was done in 2015. It was a five-year projection, a five-year plan for the 13.5% increases in the water rates. This, this proposed budget represents the fifth year of that.
Okay.
You adopted a financial policy a couple of years ago that requires us to do a rate study every five years. So part of what's in this budget is to do that next rate study. And so that issue will be revisited as part of the next rate study, and will feed into the next two-year budget cycle.
But we're still the second lowest.
We are still the lowest on water, the second lowest combined.
Okay. And I noticed, you know, our pipes are, 50-year life expectancy, and we've got quite a few of them coming into the 50-year cycle here real quick.
Yes.
And I've noticed in here, we've got, you know, adjustments and everything put in place to cover that, but it depends on what volume that comes in, which year comes in.
Right.
So that's going to be a tough one to, to handle as those pipes, you know, age out right there. And, you know, people don't think about that being in the ground, they, you know, it's hard to believe there's that many pipes that are, you know, what do we have? Our sewer pipe, 20% of our sewer pipes are 50 years old, right in that area.
Yeah.
So that's a lot of piping.
And that, and that's the purpose for, for putting funds aside, is the recognition that the infrastructure is aging.
This is, this is not a budget question, but I was, as I was driving a little day up Route 60, I took the Route 60, there's a, in James City County alongside the road there, a big pipe being put in. Is that part of ours, or?
I, I-
At least, let me put it this way, it was an elevated pipe, but I assumed they were going to bury it.
I, I don't know specifically what pipe you're talking about, but my assumption, based on what you described, is that that's a Newport News water line.
That's a Newport News water line, because it's right between the railroad right away and the road right down by Bush Gardens. Well, it's actually above 199, almost to the city line.
It's not the gas line, is it? The gas line.
I think it's maybe being a step even further down, because I think that's today-
That thing's a big, big pipe.
Yeah. Yeah. That would be my guess.
Okay.
One coming down Centerville goes all the way.
So can I, it's a danger to answer a question. You said in response to Mr. Hippel that we have the lowest water rate and second lowest combined. How much variation is there in what HRSD charges the different localities? Since that's what's driving the difference, right? So they're charging us more than other, somebody else, right?
Well, when I talk about the combined rate, I'm talking only about water and wastewater collection.
Right.
I'm not including the HRSD.
Oh, okay, just our, our own collection.
Yes, ours, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm, I'm factoring that component out.
Yeah, okay, so I can see that.
Yeah.
Any questions?
Good. Thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thank you.
We are ready to move on, I hope.
If I can just clarify, so for the next meeting, what you'd like is, is basically an overview of the debt capacity moving forward, where those balances are, and then also how that correlates with the proposed CIP for the five years. Is that correct? Okay. And any additional questions, you can let us know.
Thank you for all your hard service and work.
I still got one more.
You got one more?
I got one more. Yeah. Since you didn't decide today.
Yeah, that's right. Next week.
You got me for one more.
And after that, true.
Next morning.
All righty. We'll lead to the next, next item.
Mr. Chair, the last item, or the next item is a resolution to consider sort of un-fettering the money for the chamber. You did have $740,000 in your current year budget. It had some strings attached to it as the Senate bill money, I guess was trying to be figure out what that really meant in terms of moving money from us to the chamber, and do we have to continue that during the budget process? Last year, we released $400,000 of that back in the fall to the chamber, and again, the expectation of the law does require releasing the remainder of that. So it was putting the resolution back in front of you that would take away the strings, so to speak, and allow us to pay that to the chamber. I do think it's headed in a, in a good direction with their directors, who've had a lot of conversation. I won't, I don't think everybody is where they'd like to be, but I do think it's moving in the right direction. I do think there's a lot of transparency in the chamber that wasn't there in years previous, not that I was here, but at least in talking with many of you and others in the community, and talking to Terry at the chamber, who's been there a while, and Jody and now Vicki, who's there. I do think their intention is to be as transparent with their operations and the funding as they can be. And there may be some limited areas where that will not meet maybe our standard or desire, but overall, I do believe that years they're doing a much better job with that and trying to support their efforts for a few more years in terms of the maintenance of effort money. I know is the expectation of what we'll be expected to do along with the other localities. The other localities have paid this additional amount, so the other localities are fully paid, we're the one that's today not.
Do you want me to move the resolution?
Up to the chairman, but that one.
Okay, I'll move the resolution.
Okay.
Any discussion?
Who?
Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Hippel?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Okay. We are now down to.
Board request and directives.
Oh, jeez, I jumped right over.
You jumped right over.
Any requests or due directives?
No, this Thursday, we signed the HR, Andrew Bush Tunnel Agreement with everybody and, and Governor and all that, so hopefully he'll be there, he's supposed to be there, so hopefully he'll be there in attendance. We get his sign.
Congratulations.
Good job. Thank you.
All righty, we'll, I will ask for a motion to enter a closed session for the following. Consideration of personal matter, the appointment of individuals to county boards and/or commissions pursuant to Section 2.2, 3711 A1 of the Code of Virginia. And it'll be for Colonial Behavioral Health, Economic Development Authority, and Alternative Ultimate Race to Virginia Regional Industrial Facility Authority.
So moved.
Okay, with a motion.
Mr. Hippel? Aye. Ms. Larson?
Aye.
Ms. Sadler?
Aye.
Mr. McGlinnan?
Aye.
Mr. Eisenhour?
Aye.
We are in closed session.[1068.42]